Good afternoon, everybody. I am Jim Burnett and I have a pleasure of serving as Chairman of the Board of Trustees here at M U S. And I want to welcome you to Memphis University School for this fine day as we pay tribute to Samuel Nelson Graham II, class of 1980. Seventeen years of service on the Board, beginning in 2004, and elevated to Chairman in 2013, where he served for the next seven years, being a diligent steward, a champion for our school, and also overseeing a transition of two fine headmasters. So we're glad to have him. We're honored to have his family with him today, including his lovely wife Margaret, their two sons Nelson and his fiancee Meg Carpenter, along with Garrett, Nelson, class of '08, Garrett, class of '12, both having the fine seventh grade tutelage football of me. And not the last, but certainly probably best, Sam's fine mother, Billie Jean. Glad to have you here. Welcome all. As Sam decided to step down as Chairman a few years ago, we decided it would be a good idea to have somewhat of a pledge to follow Sam around his last year. And I was picked to be that said pledge. And you basically get inside the ropes and walk a mile in his shoes, so to speak. And being that Portland pledge, there was, on more than one occasion, those big shoes that I tried to fill during the last couple of years of COVID and several other things, rather than walking in his shoes, I wanted to feel the impact of my shoes on some of the decisions we've had to make. Many a night, I channeled my inner Seinfeld, as he would always greet his friend Newman. When something would come up that Sam didn't have to deal with, I would go Sammy. But I digress. Much like the great, late, great Ben Scully, when you're meeting with Sam, you let that meeting feeling and hearing and knowing his wisdom, his humility, and his overall positivity that left you with a great feeling. And I think we all know that. I was a clueless freshman here when Sam was a senior, and it was just as true then as it is now. Simply put, Sam is a great guy. And you'd be fortunate to call him a friend, and I am fortunate. And so today, you can see, we've got two special guests here, and I'm glad to not have to follow them. To speak on Sam's behalf, we have Headmaster Emeritus Ellis Hagwood, along with our current Headmaster Pete Sanders. Both these gentlemen have the good fortune of serving under Sam's Board chairmanship and leadership. And so Ellis, I will yield the podium to you and not follow Pete.
Well, I'm really curious about what this portrait will look like. And I see that there are a lot of other people here who feel the same way. They're here to see it. And we'll see it in just a few minutes. I heard a story about a man who sat for a portrait, and after the portrait was finished, the artist showed it to him, and the man said, "I don't like it. I don't think it looks like me, and doesn't do me justice." And the artist said, "Justice? Sir, you don't need justice. You need mercy." Not in your case, that's it. I have strong affection for each of the alumni Board Chairmen who have led this school for over three decades now, starting with Kent Wonderlick, followed by Ben Adams, Tro Gillespie, Bob Loeb, Sam Graham, and Jim Burnett. All of them prominent businessmen, highly accomplished, respected throughout the city, extremely busy. They nonetheless gave the very best efforts at which they were capable to this great school, from which they graduated decades before. Some of them barely, but... They loved the school, and they have led with excellence and grace. And our Board of Trustees could not have selected a more dedicated and effective man to follow Bob Loeb as Chairman than the man we honor this evening, Sam Graham. Sam's thoughtful, wise leadership continued the legacy of superb Alumni Board Chair leaders that we have now come to expect, but must never take for granted. Sam's love for the school and his passion for excellence clearly equaled and often excelled the models set by his predecessors. All of us who love the school owe him an extraordinary debt of gratitude for his seventeen years of leadership as a trustee, especially his seven years as Chairman of the Board, which we celebrate tonight with this portrait. His honesty, his wide range of abilities, his commitment, his good-heartedness, his patience, his humility, these characteristics conspired to make him both a powerful and unselfish leader. His obvious affection for the school, his belief in the good, his sense of personal responsibility inspired and encouraged other trustees, and since those characteristics inspired faculty and staff, and the two headmasters with whom he worked closely during his tenure as Board Chair. I think the measure of a great school leader is that he leaves the school better than he founded, and by any measure, Sam did. During Sam's seven years as Board Chair, M U S amassed numerous noteworthy accomplishments. Here are my top ten, with a little help from Perry DeBett. Number ten, multiple years of improvement to our cross-country trails through the woods. Number nine, and this, I think, would be my number one if it weren't for Pete, new left-turn signal going south on Ridge Way at our privacy Parkway campus entrance. And we worked for years to get that done, didn't we? Number eight, widening of the Webb soccer field and the addition of extra bleachers. We added, while adding, concrete amphitheater seating for Rogers Lacrosse Field. Number seven, the addition of a robotics lab in the McConne Science Center. Number six, the completion and dedication of the Jake Rudolph statue and plaza in front of Stokes Stadium. Number five, the completion and dedication of the Kroker Petrosian Fencing Center. Number four, plethora of technology upgrades to allow teachers to teach effectively during the COVID lockdowns. Number three, the completion and dedication of the Ruth and Jerry Peters Basketball Court and Lobby. Number two, the redesign of Wonderlick Lobby and the Wiener Hospitality Room in the Sioux Hyde Sports Stadium and Physical Education Center to reflect the history of sports at M U S. And of course, number one, an intensive search, which Sam led, ending with the auspicious hiring of Pete Sanders and Pete's successful transition to M U S. Tro Gillespie commented, quote, "Sam Graham was one of the most effective Board Chairs who have served this school. He was known for his quiet demeanor, coupled with consistent, steady leadership and sound judgment. Always accessible, he was valued for his deliberative approach, strategic decisions, and love of the school throughout his tenure as Chairman. Last but not least, he had courage, courage to shave his beloved beard for the portrait we are unveiling today." I think Sam's, he's an ideal combination of astute mind and tender heart, often worked behind the scenes and let others take the credit for his ideas, his foresight, his organizational skill. His humility, kindness, and compassion to others flows from the depth of his relationship with the Lord. He works as one working for the Lord, and he stands as a model for what a good man is and does. He has served as an elder at Independent Presbyterian Church for 23 years, and his Board memberships reflect his interest in the educational and spiritual welfare of others, Covenant Theological Seminary in St. Louis, Teach for America, Neighborhood Christian Centers. Chris Sanders noted, quote, "It was always evident that Sam enjoyed his time as Board Chairman, not because of his position, but because he relished serving the school he loves so much. And while Sam took his role seriously, he never did so with himself. He was always quick to recount some reprimand he received by a former teacher or to share some M U S anecdote of his days as Sammy," end quote. Sammy, yes, Sammy. You know, when he became Chairman of the Board, Sam already understood the culture of the school because he had lived it, and in fact, had helped create it. Thumb through our 1980 yearbook, and there you'll find a young man imbibing deeply what he would four decades later call, quote, "the timeless, ineffable elixir that preserves the M U S mystique from generation to generation," end quote. A young man who was growing intellectually and in favor with his peers, a young man immersed in elected student leadership positions, Student Council Commissioner of Student Activities his junior year, Student Council Vice President his senior year, both roles designed to create shared events and activities that entertained students, but also brought them closer together as a community. You'll find a picture of him working at Kentucky Fried Chicken in the summer, or scandalously shirtless on campus, a torso like that of a young Adonis. You'll find him as Elwood in a Blues Brothers Talent Show performance, and you'll find a young man who joined every club and activity that the school offered. The athletic ones, however, liked cross-country and track and field, only briefly. He was a member of the Ski Club, Sub Club, Common Sense Club, Adventure Club, Sensory Club, Civic Service Club, Fellowship of Christian Athletes Spanish Club, Ultimate Frisbee Club, and the RV Club. Feel like Johnny Cash. An impressive list of activities on that transcript demonstrating well-roundedness and fitness for admission to the University of Tennessee. What Walt Whitman said of himself, Sammy could say of himself. "I am large, I contain multitudes." Yes, the school helped shape him. His experiences here honed and smoothed his character and developed his academic capabilities, but the man of integrity whom we know today was molded years before he entered M U S by his mother, Billie Jean Graham, and his father, Dr. Joseph Graham. They reared four boys, all of whom graduated from M U S. Mark and Stephen in 1975, Sam in 1980, and Jody in 1987. Dr. Graham died in 1999, but Sam's mother, as Jim has already noted, is here today to see him honored, and we're glad you're here, Billie Jean. Sam's wife, Margaret, has provided him a lifetime of encouragement and support and admonition, as the writer in Proverbs asks, "A wife of noble character who can find?" Well, he found her, and he learned through their nearly thirty-five years together that she is worth far more than rubies. Margaret has consistently supplied, quote, "the steady pressing down of the stamp upon the wax to shape him and make him a better man." Their sons Nelson, M U S '09, Garrett, M U S '12, they're living testimony to the wisdom and guidance of Margaret and Sam as parents, and that's true. They're here today from Nashville and New York to honor their father. Bob Loeb remarked, quote, "When Sam accepted the call to Chair the Board, he knew he would lead M U S through a critical time in its history, a headmaster transition. And when that time came, Sam also agreed to chair the selection committee. Not since Kent Wonderlick led a Capitol campaign and chaired the Board at the same time had a trustee assumed so much responsibility." Sam scored a trifecta in his years at M U S as a student, parent, trustee. Margaret was a huge part of these latest two roles, and the M U S community owes them both our most sincere gratitude for a job well done," end quote, says Bob Loeb. Sam Graham's life has displayed an unwavering commitment to the people and the places he loves. He is a man of immense generosity and has a great heart. Proverbs reminds us that, quote, "As water reflects a face, so a man's heart reflects the man," end quote. And Sam loves his wife, his sons, his parents, his church, this city, and this school with all his heart and soul and mind and strength, but especially, especially with his heart. As Alexander Pope said of his friend Joseph Addison, we can say of Sam, quote, "In action faithful and in honor clear, who broke no promise, served no private end," end quote. Well, Sam, there's a suitable place now waiting in the Low Board Room for your portrait amidst the pantheon of illustrious Board Chairmen who have gone before you. Alex Welford, Bobby Snowden, Roy Bell, Buddy Morrison, Kent Wonderlick, Ben Adams, Tro Gillespie, Bob Loeb. Heady company, to be sure, but you deserve to be there among that group of great men who have served nobly, led with distinction. Sam Graham, we hold you in the highest esteem. We will always be grateful for you, and we will never forget what you mean to all of us who love Memphis University School. Veritas honorfully.
I want to join Jim Burnett in just welcoming all of you back to campus for this special event, as we pay tribute to Sam Graham. And as noted, Sam served on the Board for seventeen years, seven, the last seven, as Board Chair. And he was a diligent steward promoting the welfare at M U S, especially as Board Chair. And we're honored to have Graham's family here. Welcome. It's a real treat to have you on campus for this wonderful event. The Chairman Portrait Series, I want to note, was established to pay tribute to the school leaders who created and sustained the tradition of excellence at M U S, individuals whose leadership, loyalty, and commitment to excellence have made M U S what it is today. It's a wonderful tradition we have here honoring faculty with portraits. Sam gave me a behind-the-scenes tour when I was getting ready to be introduced, or actually it was the second visit on my interview. And seeing those portraits of the teachers was something, seeing the headmasters portraits, and then seeing the Board Chair's portraits in the Low Room was the clincher for me in so many ways. And as noted by Ellis, our collection includes the eight Chairs who preceded you, and you're going to join that lot of group of individuals. For me to talk about Sam, I'm going to focus on the person level in many ways, because he's really the first person I met at M U S. And I want to tell you something. He is a solid leader of men, and he has chaired this Board and given leadership, strategic leadership at the school. He brought the bare incredible experience on this position. It's a lot of work. I've always had a notion of what the Board does, but it wasn't until I became Headmaster that I realized just how much they do and how much the Board Chair does. But your experience serving on the session of your church, on the Board Seminary, not here, Memphis, up in St. Louis, I did not realize until I did a little research that you were on the Advisory Board of Teach for America, which I think is a noble endeavor. But keep in mind also that for eleven years, he's been the CEO of a growing, highly respected company with a really just a solid culture. And to do all that, and then to give time, the time he gave to this rookie Headmaster the way he did when I came on board, that was really something. But you know, Sam, it was six years ago, almost this week, when I first interviewed. And it was in the top floor of the Crescent Building, and it was nicely situated in that corner meeting room. And I came in, Jim Burnett was to my immediate left, so he was a place I remember immediately, of course, and the others, Mark was there, and Ben was there, as were others. And it's hard not to forget that, but I remember sitting across and having the eye contact with you at the other end of the table. I also remember, I was asked, I was given a list of restaurants I could eat at, because I was supposed to get in at five o'clock, the plane didn't get in until nine. So I was asked, "Where'd you eat?" They were hoping I'd eat at this barbecue, whatever. And I said, "Well, I ate at Sonic." That sophisticated guy. And there was a little silence, except Sam let out a big laugh, and I said, "Okay, I'm gonna be okay here." So that was a good moment. But that process led to a second interview, and it was just an ongoing conversation that kept making more and more sense. And it was just such an honor for Tracy. And Tracy cannot be here, she's volunteering out on the golf course and is stuck somewhere on the back nine. If you text it again, please apologize, because it meant a lot to her, too. But I just really appreciate the time you took, knowing all that you do in a given day, running a company, serving on this Board, getting involved, this organization, that you gave me the time that you did, because it meant a lot to me. I've been around for a while in the school world, and this was going to be my first tour as Head, and you knew that the acculturation process, the onboarding, was going to be important. So we had biweekly phone calls, got sent a lot of books. Dr. Harkins sent me a set of books, which was nice, big headed box of books. And, but we had those conversations, and I had a number of trips out here. With each trip, I got a little lesson in what M U S was all about. And it made a big difference, because by the time I got here, I felt like I had, you know, the training wheels were off and I could really go. At the same time, I always knew there was someone whose number was burned into my phone that I could call. And that's still true today, and that's very important. And then those first two years were extremely key for me in my process of becoming, you know, the full-fledged head of the school. And Sam was very nice to stay on for another two years as Board Chair, the person who hired me to stay on and get me to that point. At that time, I should have realized that with Jim Burnett at the other end, I'm going to be in great shape. But when the handoff came, it was, what, the summer of 2020, and we had no idea what we were in the midst of, what lay ahead. We're still navigating those waters in many ways, but it was so great to have from one lifeline to another with Jim, who's just fantastic. But knowing that I can call Sam Graham and leave a message or a text, and hope he'll call back, I can't tell you what that means to me. And I know there are other Board Members, I could call them and get the same response. But our relationship runs pretty deep for six years. Also, technically, as I learned about the Board, the one employee of the Board is the Headmaster, so I have twenty-five bosses, you can imagine that. But I have sort of a supreme boss in the Board Chair. And I've never had the chance to say this in public, "You're a great boss. You did a great job." And I really appreciate that. It means a lot to me. And now I can say, "You're a good friend. How's that?" And that is really special to me. But Sam, thank you on a personal level for what you've done for me professionally and what that's meant for the school. Thank you for being here for the school. You're a believer in this place. I know your office, you can walk to your hire purchase, or come out, and you've got a nice terrace out there, and you can look out over the campus. In fact, the first side of the campus I had was at the end of the interview, and he said, "Well, would you like to see it campus?" I wasn't too sure where it was. And he took me over to the window, and I looked out, saw these beautiful trees and these buildings, and that was that first step of me following you up with this place. But again, thank you for all that you've done for the school. Thank you for what you've done for Tracy and me, and getting us on board and teaching us early on that Memphis was going to be great, and we love it here. And you're a special person. You're joining quite a group in the gallery in the Low Room, and enjoy this time. You deserve it, and thank you so much for myself, Tracy, and on behalf of the entire school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellis and Pete. I'm going to harken back about thirty years and channel ranking folks. One of my good friends runs the business side of the school here. I think it was at my rehearsal dinner, he said something. We might as well go ahead and shoot him now, because he's never going to get any better than he is today. Keep that in mind, Margaret. We're doing our best. The Chairman Portrait Series was established to pay tribute to school leaders who created and sustained the tradition of excellence at M U S, individuals whose leadership, loyalty, and commitment of excellence have made M U S what it is today. And I'm going to repeat this, because there's some heavy lifting that goes on behind the scenes, and these men who I've gotten to know through Sam are really special. And not only is Sam, I know, honored to be a part of it, and Sam, they're honored to have you in this club as well. And that's Alec Welford, Bobby Snowden, Roy Bell, Buddy Morrison, Kent Wonderlick, Ben Adams, Tro Gillespie, and Bob Loeb, who are in the collection. That is some noble folks there that I know you'll be honored to be a part of, and you deserve it. The portrait of Sam is by well-known artist Beth Stevens. Ms. Stevens is an accomplished portrait artist from Marietta, Georgia. Her signature oil-on-canvas portrait paintings have earned her praise and national recognition for their elegance and beauty. She's previously painted portraits of Margaret and Sam's sons, I believe. Her work now will hang in the prestigious collection of Memphis University School. So Sam and Margaret, will you please join? And I'm not going to touch that, I'm going to stand over here. And now, in gratitude for the leadership and friendship of Sam Graham, Ninth Chairman of the Board of Trustees of Memphis University School, I'm pleased to present his portrait to the school. Sam, I would ask if you want to say a few words, but I know you do.
Class of '80. It's so great to see y'all, thank you for being here. Ellis, Pete, and Jim, I've never known you to be prone to hyperbole, but I think you've definitely stepped over the line and were overly gracious. Especially, thank you for saying all of those things in front of my mother. Still trying to live up to her standards. If only we could flashback to the 1970s and recreate this moment, that would be really helpful. Two people haven't been thanked. Hey, Mr. Large. Thank you for being here, please. Perry DeBett, Elizabeth Francis, y'all made this whole experience incredibly special. Thank you. Thank you. You do a lot of things behind the scenes, Perry, I'm not sure where you went, but thank you. I wanted y'all to be acknowledged. It's humbling to see all y'all here. I'm especially grateful for my mother, Margaret, my father-in-law. Did you play golf today, Johnny?
Rain.
Hit a hole in one at age ninety-three, just want y'all to live up to that. Nelson, my soon-to-be daughter-in-law, Meg, Garrett, my youngest brother, Jody, class of '87. of eighty-seven, and my nephew, Willz. Thank y'all for being here. I'm blessed with a wonderful family, and it's been the core of who I am. I recall attending the unveiling ceremonies. The first one was Roy Bell. Then Kent, Ben, Trog, and Bob, I had the honor of attending your unveiling ceremonies. And I recall several of those great leaders got a little emotional. And I remember thinking, come on, man, get it together, you know? But now that I'm here, I get it. I get it. So I'm going to strive to hold it together, but there's no guarantees. This foyer has always been a very special place for me, and that goes back to the nineteen sixties when I came here as a toe-headed six-year-old for M U S Day Camp, walked through these halls for the first time. I vividly recall a conversation with Colonel Lynn, right about where Mom's sitting right now. And those of you who knew him, he was a rather stoic leader, but he had an unusual capacity to know every student's last name. And during that encounter, he asked me, "Mr. Graham, what do you plan to do with your It was his last year as the founding headmaster of the new M U S. I felt like I was in the presence of Moses, you know? Or maybe George Washington. And I think I recall telling him I wanted to be a lawyer or maybe go into the investment business. And all I remember him doing is nodding and going, "Carry on, carry on." One of the great blessings of my life is that I have known four of five headmasters of this great school. And I've had a special connection with the one I didn't know. Mr. Campbell, Bill Campbell, his daughter was Margaret's suite mate at Vanderbilt and was a bridesmaid in our wedding. I never met Mr. Campbell, but through that means had an impact on our lives. And as I look at these portraits of Coach Thor and Colonel Lynn and E. Buddy over there, I, each of those men left an indelible print on my life, as they have many of yours, and it's going to remain the rest of my days. And it was that steady pressing down of the stamp upon the wax that saved me from a life of frivolity and mediocrity. I can't recall if this was said during my time here as a student or perhaps in more recent years, but a great leader once said, this is so good. "Amidst all the vagaries and vicissitudes of this world, M U S is like a beacon of light within the mind shaft of life." You're standing about that, is that my grade? This morning, I asked my son Garrett, class of two thousand twelve, if he had any advice for my speech. And he grinned and cheered two exhortations. Dad, don't try to sound any smarter than you are. And avoid the temptation to quote any Greek philosophers or Italian poets, which you have never read. Only a beloved family member can give such candid and useful advice. There's so many people I can thank, but today I want to thank one person in particular. Her name is Billy Jean Graham. This is where I'm going to hold it together. Mom, if it wasn't for you, I never would have attended M U S. You and I know that. It's been my studied observation over many decades that most M U S men have very strong I don't wish to take anything away from the contributions of fathers. I was one, I am one. But in my opinion, it's the mothers who deserve the lion's share of credit. One night back in the nineteen seventies, Mom comes to my bedroom right before I'd go to sleep, and she says, I think this is almost verbatim, "Well, you've been accepted to attend M U S like your other brothers did, but I'm not convinced you're cut out for that school. You're probably smart enough, but if you go there, they're not going to tolerate all the clowning around you've been doing in school up to now. You're going to have to buckle down and get serious. Your father and I are not going to spend that kind of tuition money for you to barely get by and play." And I know what y'all are all saying right now, but she looks like such a gentle, graceful woman. Don't be fooled. Even today, she's one of the hardest-working, most disciplined people I know. Just ask the people at the golf course that she oversees, and they'll tell you. Mom never let any of her kids coast or take the easy way out. She always told us that she and Dad considered every dollar spent on M U S tuition as a long-term investment. And then she added, "And we expect to have a nice return on our investments." Mom and I made an agreement that I'd go to M U S for one year and see how it turned out. I wanted to prove to her that I could do the work and maybe even excel in one area. And then I planned to go back to my coed school after I'd proved my point. But like others can say, I fell in love with M U S, and there was no other school for me ever. One day, Coach Peters sent a letter home to my parents. Mom called me into her office. Yes, she had an office at home. She peered over her glasses and said, "Do you want to try to explain this letter to me?" To paraphrase Coach Peters, he had written the following. "Doctor and Miss Graham, Sammy is doing fine on the cross-country team. However, he's currently number six on our seven-person roster, and I believe if he worked really hard, he might could be number five. He sometimes does not give his full effort at practice. Also, I recently looked at his academic progress report, and I noticed that he made a C-plus in geometry. There's no excuse for that. If he would spend more time in the library and less time in the student lounge, he could definitely make a B-minus." Confucius once said, now Garrett, this one's okay, he was neither Greek or Italian. If you're the smartest, if you're ever the smartest person in the room, then you're in the wrong room. I was never in the wrong room at M U S. M U S taught me to surround myself with motivated, smart people who have strong ethics and great core values. I'm very fortunate to have business partners today that exemplify those same characteristics. Some of who are M U S alumni and members of M U S families, thank you for being here as well. One last story. This is from more recent years. A few years ago, there was a dedication ceremony in what I still call the New Jim. The floor was being named for Ruth and Jerry Peters. Both of them were there, but Coach Peters was pretty feeble and advanced in years. Many of us went up to him to show our appreciation for all the years that he had devoted to this place. When it came my time, I couldn't hear his faint voice, so I had to kneel down and get out of eye with him in his sitting position. And he looked at me with those piercing eyes, and he said, "Sammy, thank you for all you have done for the school. It's important. I'm proud of you." Honestly, I didn't know how to respond. Up to that point, he had always been telling me to work harder and run faster. I stuttered out an inadequate "thank you," and that's when the magic happened. He said, "Sammy," and he had one of those long pregnant pauses that he was well-known for. He said, "You are a fine example of how great things can be achieved by someone who works hard, yet is only slightly above average." I laughed. He didn't. We both knew he was right. I told him I loved him. It's the first and only time I told him that. His simple reply was, "I know." As the board chair, I had the incredible privilege of working with two great headmasters. And let me assure you that being the headmaster of a place like M U S takes a very dedicated and special person. Ellis, I've never witnessed a leader like you. Your wisdom, your unselfishness, your drive with, your steadfast devotion to doing what is right. And people only see a fraction of what our headmasters do for the good of the school and at their own detriment. But board chair is good to see it. As long as I live, I aspire to emulate those qualities as best as God grants me grace to do so. After Ellis had his retirement, and we were beginning the search for his successor, I went to Kent Wonderlick for advice. He simply said, "Sammy, don't screw it up." I knew, and he knew, that's all he needed to say. Pete, our search committee knew you were the right person for the job. Those of you who are here that were on the search committee, and there are so of you here, you can corroborate this. Pete, you reminded us of all the intangible qualities that your predecessors possessed. Several candidates were qualified, but you possess those key intangibles. You're an experienced teacher, gifted administrator, a coach. You exude humility and do not seek the limelight. You're well-traveled. You celebrate teachers, and you're steady under pressure. We had no idea how important that quality was for me. During our search process, when you and I walked through the dining hall on one of your visits, you got so excited when you saw those faculty portraits. And I got excited telling you about them. That's what we knew. It's not sunk in that my portrait's going to hang alongside former board chairs whom I owe so much and whom I greatly admire and love. Or that it will even be in the same building with the faculty portraits, many of whom significantly shaped my life. So I'll close with this scripture passage, Deuteronomy, chapter six. "When the Lord your God brings you into the land, he swore to your fathers, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, to give you a land, large flourishing cities you did not build, houses filled with all kinds of good things you did not provide, wells you did not dig, and vineyards and olive groves you did not plant. Then when you eat and are satisfied, be careful that you do not forget the Lord." Dear M U S, how candid that it brought me to these halls. Thank you.
Billy Jean may be shockingly very well done. Thank you all for being here, and thanks for all you do for this great school. I know it means a lot to Sam and his family that you're here. I hope you'll stick around and have some refreshments and visit with him and enjoy this great portrait we just get to see. So thanks for coming, everyone.